We'll call the meeting to order here for the Morton County Plan and Zoning for May 28th of year 25. And we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you.
It's contagious, it's going on.
Okay, we'll have the roll call. Jesse Kiss, is he online? Okay, Jesse's the chairman, so I'm calling him for him tonight. He's not here tonight. Jackie Buckley. Andy Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Becky Wald is absent. Jerick Seisler.
He's been off. He's not on anymore.
Oh, he's not on? Okay, I'm looking at an older list here. I thought, boy, that looked right. Okay, Mike Braun.
Here.
Marie Tomac.
She's on. She's on.
Here.
Okay, she's online. Okay. Carter Berger.
Here.
Dwayne Eli.
Yep.
And Dennis Roy, I'm present here as well. So that is our, we have a quorum, and so we're able to conduct business as presented. We have the agenda before tonight. There are five items on the agenda. They're all public hearings. So do we have someone to make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Jackie to approve the agenda, and by Braun to, as a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we approve the agenda. Then we have the minutes. This is from our last meeting on April 23rd of '25. They've been given out for your purview. Any questions about the agenda? Any additions?
Move to approve the minutes.
Make Mike Braun approve, makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and Dwayne makes a second on that. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, then the minutes are approved from the April 23rd meeting. Okay, we'll begin tonight, and our first public hearing is request from Curtis Erika Hartman for the final plat of a short form subdivision known as Hartman Subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential approximately 1.86 acres in the southeast quarter of Section 31 Township 140 North, Range 89 West in Morton County. Natalie.
So this item is about four miles east of Hebron. We're very zoomed out to give you a context, so this is the interchange, that's the rail facility, and then the subdivision is right there. They are looking to simply split off one residential lot from the agricultural section. The lot that's proposed is 1.86 acres. So we have, they're dedicating a 50-foot right-of-way corridor, 40 feet of utility easement. They did call southwest water, and that can get extended to the subdivision, so they will have water service and power will also be available. Staff is recommending approval, and I can take any questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Natalie?
Mr. Chairman, just quick question about sewer. Weren't we trying to keep a minimum of two acres?
Acre and a half. Two is for commercial, industrial, yeah, just acre and a half for residential.
And at one point it exceeds that.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Any other questions from Natalie? If not, then, then I'll proceed to the public hearing part and open up here for those in attendance who have any input, any questions or comments to be made regarding this particular item. So I'll now open the public hearing. And if you have, you know, any comments to make on this here, please come forward and state your name. Anybody representing Curtis and Erika Hartman item here? Yes, sir.
I'm represented. I'm Kurt Hartman.
Okay. Do you care to speak on it, Natalie? Is there anything you want to convey to us on that?
Just hope you approve it, but my kids can put a house out there, but they needed a lot for it.
Okay. Of course, Natalie has been checking with you, I presume, on this here, and we go very strongly on the staff, recommendation of the staff, and presume that many of the important details have been taken care of anyway. But there's a lot for coming in comment. Okay, then I'll call for a second comment on this item. Third and final call. Anybody want to comment on the public hearing from Curtis and Erika Hartman? If not, then I will close this public hearing and open it up to the commission here to make motions, ask other questions, and deal with this.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for motion?
If there's no other questions or any other comments from the commission, I would be.
I would move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short form subdivision known as Hartman Subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Okay, we have Jackie Buckley, who made the second on that. Mr. Berger. I mean, you made the motion.
Andy seconded.
Oh, Andy. Okay, I'm sorry, my left ear isn't as good as my right. Okay, Andy Zachmeyer, second that particular motion. Any other comments? Then I'll call the roll. Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Berger.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And, oh, yeah. Tomac.
Yes.
That means we, the motion's been made and carried and voted upon, so that would be the approval for this particular item. Then we'll proceed to item number two, which is a public hearing. It's a request from Rick and Kathy Stern for the preliminary plat of a long form subdivision known as the Stern 5th subdivision on approximately 159.07 acres in the southwest quarter of Section 24 Township 139 North, Range 84 West in Morton County.
So this item will probably look very familiar. The Stern 4th subdivision was approved last month. County Commission approved it on May 10th, 8th. So the approval for the 4th was this residential lot and this residential lot. This one already existed, and then there's just the remainder of the quarter. So the purpose in bringing this back is to have all the lots on one plat instead of being on different plats and to address the question about how much right-of-way should go on that portion of 36 and a half, 36 and a half Avenue. So it's not, it would not be an entitlement or an approval of any new lots. It's just to consolidate development, that development requests that have been coming to the board in that area and put them all on one plat. So, and it's a long form because it's more than two lots, so this will be at this month and next month as well. So with that, I can take any questions. Yeah, again, just consolidating lots that exist.
Natalie will be, will be coming for us again on the next meeting? Okay.
Because it has to. And in fact, I think, so there was a question last month when we were reviewing Stern 4th, and I couldn't remember how I had advertised it in the letters, and I had said long form, so, and that they were asking for a variance in process. So it was advertised that way. Now we sent letters again, so it was advertised once again as a long form subdivision.
Okay. Okay, any questions or information needed from Natalie on this? I remember this being before us before.
Yep.
So any questions from Natalie, for Natalie? Natalie, in further from the commission here to seek information, then I'll open the public hearing on item number two. So anybody here want to speak on item number two, the request from Kathy and Rick Stern? Is there anybody here to speak on that? Yes, sir.
I'm Rick Stern.
You want to come up forward, please?
I'm just curious to say the same thing he said. No, but aren't they good to prove?
They, they're supposed to, we want you to come to the mic, Rick. Sorry, because they can't hear you on the recording.
Well, not only that, but we could, it could be that the committee has some very serious questions from you.
That's because you're talking to your kids, Rick.
We lack a chance to interrogate you.
Yeah, it looks like. Is this on? Yeah, my name's Rick Stern, and I, I guess that my house is, was the issue that we had to combine it with a quarter of, one of my quarters of land, because you can only have, what, a maximum of four on a quarter? And I guess the bottom line is, my kids couldn't wait to leave when they were high school and they went to college, and then they all wanted to come back and have a few acres and put a house on, and that's basically what this is all amounting to. It's all two sons and two daughters. So I'm just putting my, trying to put my five acres that I had into one of my quarters, and so it would allow Luke to have a three-acre lot. And I guess, other than that, I don't know if there's any other issues. If there's any questions, you can ask.
Anybody have any questions?
It's just that they've learned how smart you really are, Rick, after they got out of college.
You know, I, I make a remark on that all the time, is that, like I said, they, they couldn't wait to leave, and then they found out that it probably wasn't as big of a a-hole as they thought it was, that they all came back and wanted a spot. But that's kind of the bottom line.
It's all Kathy, I know.
Yeah, well, you know my wife.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Yeah, it's good to have family come back and resettle in those family areas. Very important.
Yeah, it's pretty special. Sometimes it's too convenient, but it works.
Okay. Any other person here like to make a comment on item number two, the request from Rick and Kathy Stern? Okay, second call. Third and final call. Anybody make a comment on this? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing for item number two and open it up for action from the committee, our commission.
I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the long form subdivision known as Stern 5th subdivision, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Braun, a second by Commissioner Berger to approve the second item. Any other questions, comments? Then I will call for the vote. Zachmeyer.
Yes.
L.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Berger.
Yes.
Tomac.
Oh, there we go.
Did she comment?
Said yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well, so unanimous, everybody agrees to approve that. Then we'll go on down to the third public hearing item, which is a request from Sheldon and Cheryl Wolf for the final plat of a short form subdivision known as Sweetbrier 3rd Division and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on approximately 11.45 acres in the southwest quarter of Section 27 Township 139 North, Range 83 West in Morton County.
So this is located, here's the interchange, this is Old Ten, and then you go down and Sweetbrier School is just north of where the subdivision is. So you see that everything around it is agricultural. That one first, so, hard to see on here, but in your packet, so there were many tiny little lots that were divided back when, you know, this is going to be probably a railroad town, like all our little town sites, so there's tons of lots, they're just combining them all together into one big lot, dedicating them right-of-way. So almost all of this is in the special flood hazard area from Sweetbrier Creek running down would be seasonal flooding, but this area is not in the flood zone, so that's enough space for somebody to put a house eventually if they wanted to put one on there. So just that to note. They are dedicating an easement here. This would serve the residual quarter in that direction. That's a well-established private road. So with that, staff is recommending approval, and I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie? Again, any questions for Natalie on the request from Sheldon and Cheryl Wolf? There's no comments or questions from the commission at this time. I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here representing Sheldon or Cheryl Wolf that would like to speak?
Hi, welcome, thanks, I'm Sheldon Wolf. I'm here, what I'm really trying to do with this property is clean up a lot of different things. There is two auditor lots currently, on Auditor Lot A, Auditor Lot B, which is up on that end where we can actually build on, Auditor Lot A. In 2002, I was given a variance by the county to actually build on that lot, so I do have a variance from the county actually to build on Auditor Lot A already. But what I want to do is really to vacate all of the streets, combine all of those other lots into one lot, and just get it done. And since there's, in the floodplain, it's just one big lot. We had talked about putting two lots in there, but we're only going to go with one lot in relation to it. And also, put in the right-of-way for Mr. Brills to be able to get into his property that's on there, too. So it's really a cleanup of some of the things that have happened in the past. I couldn't do it back in 2002 when I did it the first time, because I didn't own all them lots. I was five or seven, I don't remember, or owned by somebody else, and I picked them up for back taxes quite a while ago. So I'm just trying to straighten out the property. I'm tired of getting 15, 20 different tax statements and want to get it on one statement, so it's cleaned up in relation to it. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here without, make a comment or provide input on the Sweetbrier 3rd subdivision request? Second call for public input. Third call for public input, and final call. Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, then we will close the public hearing and open it up for this. Natalie, when you look at this, you know, you have all these yellow, and it, it looks like a demarcation for each individual, is there 11? Each one of these, was it a separate lot before?
Yeah, and I want to commend Mr. Wolf for making the effort to consolidate parcels. This is what, as the planner, I dream about, and like, can't people just sell out to each other? So thank you so much for going to that effort. That's great. Yes, they were all very little lots.
But, but they're, it's all the ones that are adjacent to each other, right? Because I see a yellow to the right there with a lot in between.
You're looking wrong, you're down, we're down here.
How was that?
This is. Oh, you're probably looking at west acres. That's way further north.
Oh, you're, oh, okay.
It's tiny. I had to zoom way out so people would know what it was.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong thing here on this particular map, then. Okay, that clarifies that.
Let's see, they're all, when you look at these, these are all lots.
Okay. Yeah, that, looks like that really needed to be cleaned up.
Yes.
Okay, it's back to the board here. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-term, short-form subdivision known as Sweetbrier 3rd subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. Wait, wait a second. I do. Okay, we have a Commissioner Berger who made the motion, and Commissioner Braun who made the second on this particular third item. Any further questions, any comments? Then I'll call for the vote. Zachmeyer.
Yes.
L.
Yes.
Buckley.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Berger.
Yes.
Tomac.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I vote yes as well, so that motion is carried, then. Let's take us down to the fourth public hearing, and that's a request from Belles, is that how you pronounce that?
Beliles.
Beliles?
Yeah.
Okay, Beliles Trust for the preliminary plat for a long form subdivision known as Greither Forest Subdivision and a zoning map amendment from residential to commercial, Lot 2 only, including the vacation of alleyways on approximately 7.81 acres in the northwest quarter of Section 11 Township 135 North, Range 79 West in Morton County.
So this is, hard to see the pink line on there, so it's including this block, this block, and then this was Eisenbarth subdivision that was approved by the county back in October of 2019, which was the, a residential lot and the commercial lot with the bar. So it's just, and it's not, not including this, so just it jogs. So it's those properties consolidating into four lot. So basically, it would be, since each of these lots would have access to a public right-of-way, it's just getting rid of all the alleyways and right-of-ways that were never used, you know, internally, and combining the same situation where, you know, you have really, really small lots, and lots of those small lots, so just combining them into four. So the zone change is because the lot with the bar is getting a little bit bigger, so it's a zone change to commercial for this part, but it's not a change in use. It's already zoned commercial, so it's just extending that lot. This lot was approved by the county under an acre and a half. Western Plains Public Health, which was Custer Health back then, had said that they determined there was enough room for septic on that lot even as it was, and in this scenario, that lot is getting even bigger, so they would have even more options for replacement septic when they get to that point. And again, Western Plains staff did review this and said that the lot was adequate before, and it would be adequate now, being a little bit bigger, but it's still not quite to an acre and a half, but the county had already approved it undersized before. So this is just making it even bigger. And then this has a trailer home on it. They do have a Missouri West Water account. The bar has a Missouri West Water account, and the, or sorry, the house does the bar.
Yeah, we're looking at the bar as well.
As well, okay, yeah. So this would be the only one that doesn't have a Missouri West Water account, so they would probably be on a well if and when they were to develop that. Septic system was fine at last inspection on the bar, but Western Plains said that it is tight, so if they need a replacement system, it's very good that this lot is expanding. So just positive all around, and cleaning it up really well. So our plan, our future land use for Fort Rice is just existing development, so just continuing the uses that are there already. So the bar was already there, just continuing that use, and then making actual conforming buildable lots out of the residential lots that are there. So, and this is a long form, so we will see it again, but staff is recommending approval without any changes. We already had a lot of discussions about it, and the neighbors have had discussions among themselves and shifting boundaries, and I think it's in good shape. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions for Natalie? Commissioners, any questions, comments to be made?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. In the bar lot on the, this, this map, Natalie, is there buildings to the south there, those two white strips? Or is that just?
So, that's a separate parcel.
No, it's in with the bar lot.
Oh.
Trucks.
Yeah, you mean, way on the south side. Sorry. Yeah, they're trucks.
Okay, all right.
Or tri, yeah, trailer. Vehicle of some kind. Movable, movable object.
All right. Okay, that was my only question.
Yep.
Okay, there's a clarification for that. Any other comments, questions?
I guess I think it's great that this is getting taken care of. Done, yes, I agree.
Yeah, there's been, I think, working with Fort Rice down in that area to make it more amenable.
Yes.
For the people there over a period of time, and so I think it's moving in the right direction.
I, I agree. Yeah, good progress.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. The current sewer system for the bar, is it going to be all enclosed on the bar lot now?
Yes.
Because I know that was a big problem.
Yep, they would all be, right. It would all be then now that the lot is expanding. And I can't say where it was before, but Custer, or Western Plains said that it was functioning as it should be.
It was under the old right-of-way, and that was, you know, going way back to when I first started. With the Fort Rice problems, that was, well, what are you going to do with the right-of-way with a private sewer underneath of it?
Right, and this would be getting rid of that and just putting it on the lot.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions for Natalie? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing for the Greither Forest subdivision. Anybody here representing this particular item, like speak or anything on this? Come up, anything we need to ask of you, perhaps?
We just want to pay more property tax.
That's worthy of sanctu. Anyone else here on the Greither Forest subdivision? Okay, state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Jackie Andal with Century 21 Morrison Realty. I'm here on behalf of Derek and Cindy Beliles, just to let you know, they're, they're out of state, they weren't able to make the hearing, but they're hoping that you can see the wisdom in this, and just clean it up and, and make it, you know, better use of the land that's there and, and make that lot conform better as a residential lot.
So Jackie, you have the inside take on all this here, then, and if there's anybody, if we have any questions, you can probably answer them?
I missed the question.
Well, I mean, you, you're well acquainted with this particular application, I presume?
I am, yeah. So it just gives you, instead of a bunch of little lots and right-of-ways running through them, gives you the ability to have a conforming lot easier to get financial. running through them, gives you the ability to have a conforming lot easier to get financing for a residence that, you know, has a contiguous, one contiguous lot rather than a bunch of little lots. They did actually add a couple of lots a while back, and so just makes it work a little bit better for, you know, the need for septic and all of that.
Anybody have any questions for Jackie? Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on the Gwither Forest subdivision item? Second call for input for this particular item. Third and final call, anybody wish to speak on this item? Then I will close the public hearing for the Gwither Forest subdivision and turn it over here to the commission at this time.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
If there's no other questions or comments or input from the commission, I'd say we are ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the long-form subdivision known as the Gwither Forest subdivision and zoning map amendment from residential to commercial for lot two only, as the subdivision conforms to regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Jackie Buckley and a motion by L to approve this. Any further comments or questions? Then I'll call a vote. Zach Meyer?
Yes.
L?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Tomac?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, and that motion is carried. We, we have run a marathon so far. People, it is unusual for us to go through four items and allow you to have a much longer evening. So we're down to the, the final one, which is the public hearing regarding the Morton County Land Use Codes regarding to meatpacking use standards. I think we discussed it in somewhat detail at the last meeting as well, so.
Yes.
Natalie, you want to fill us in on that one?
Yeah, so the comment at the last meeting was, you know, why are we regulating to the square foot of, you know, size of the building? Why don't we regulate to number of head that are being processed, which makes sense. And in that time, I talked to the applicant who, or going to be an applicant, who had interest in opening a facility like this in St. Anthony, and they said at the six and one in New Salem, they do about 12, kind of maximum 12 if you're doing beef, would do 12 a week. He said there was one place further east in the state where they were trying to get to something like 80, and that's not real feasible. So, I mean, I'm suggesting 100 because, just to leave room, you know, and that's still not to the point where it's going to be, I think, a huge, huge impactful facility. We could switch it to 80. I think we're probably not likely to see the type of meatpacking large, I mean, we're just not in the right location, so this is more so to guide development of the smaller facilities so that they know what to expect, and that there is a defined standards and process so that, you know, when the neighbors come in and make comments, that it's already been laid out, the expectations for, our standards for these facilities. So that was the main thing that changed, was just the number. And then adding what should be in the site plan and traffic study. So if, so it says in here, obviously, all major meatpacking or meat processing facility would have to submit a traffic impact study, but for the smaller, the minor meatpacking, only if they let out directly onto a state highway, they would need to, which DOT would require anyway, but it's just we have it in here to put them on notice that they would have to do that. If we wanted to say you have to do traffic study if you let out onto an arterial, you know, a county arterial, if we're worried about that, we could put that in here. I didn't because I didn't think that was probably necessary, but we can have that discussion. And then the rest of it was pretty much the same. I change it, live animal is not held on site for more than 24 hours for the minor, just to give you time. If you drop it off, usually drop off and leave it and come back when it's all processed. So, you know, drop off, if you go early and you drop off after lunch, and then you don't process the next day till just before lunch, you know, then that's a little less than 24 hours.
Yeah, we had the discussion the last time about, about that particular issue.
Right, the 18 or 12, or 12 wasn't quite enough, so 24, 24 hours.
Well, and most plants are going to police that themselves.
Exactly.
Because they're going, I mean, when they harvest animals, it's going to be in that timeframe.
Exactly, yep.
Right, Kurt?
Depends.
We've got a, we've got an inspector in the building here.
If you're going to go to 80 head, you can bring in a pot load of cattle, they can be there more than 24 hours before a small plant is going to get done. Look at what happened down in Mott. You bring in cattle and they'd be sitting there for a while. All the federal requirements are is that they be fed and watered.
Watered, yep.
Water continuously, and, and fed and gelled over 24 hours.
So if we have that in here, that's kind of going to be self-policing, that it's like if you can't get to it within 24 hours, you shouldn't be processing that many.
Well, the thing is, if you're going to say that you can't.
Kurt, why don't you come up, you need to have you come up to the mic, Kurt.
Oh, you might state your qualifications right of way, too.
Curtis Hartman, meat inspector for 36 years, retired at now. If you're going to, you were talking 80 head for a limitation, that's a lot of head to be running through. Like six and one meats, yeah, they do about a dozen head a day on their slaughter days for beef. But Mott was doing a lot more than that, and they were pushing beef through. And the situation there, the facility, it was set up as a small facility, initially set up to only run 15 head a day, but he pushed more through, and that caused problems. And what, I don't know what the land use code is for inedible handling and that stuff, too. That's another big one, because is, how is the inedible going to be handled? There's not many places to put inedible anymore. Nobody takes it. What is the control for the smell of the inedible in the hot summer days if it isn't going to get hauled away right of way? I wouldn't want an 80-head locker plant beside my plant unless I knew all these rules.
Do you feel that these rules, that these?
I haven't seen all the rules.
Oh, you haven't seen them?
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm wondering if 80 is a little.
Much.
Much.
If you're going to go for 24 hours, I wouldn't go over 20 on a 20-head hold, because, yeah, you might get a few extra in there, because if you say 12, and you run a two-day kill, you're going to hold them over, you can still get them pretty much all done in two days that way, but you're going 80 head, you're pushing. Yeah, whatever. I have a smaller number, because you're looking at small plants like Missouri Valley, they used to hold cattle longer than one day, too, and that was a small plant, too. They did 15 head a day max, when that was down below the bridge. So you got to have a limitation on there, what you want, how long to hold them, and if you don't put it, what's to stop them from feeding them for a longer period of time. It's up to you guys. That's why you guys are elected as commissioners.
Well, we appreciate your, your experience and background, honestly, because that would be valuable input.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hartman, what do people usually do with the inedible portions? I mean, what's due process typically?
Years ago, there, there was a rendering plant in Glenall, and I picked it all up. Now, some people are burning it, but then the stench, I don't know what the stench of burning inedible is going to be. Some bury it in a pit, if you got a big enough spot where you can bury it in pit, but then that has to be approved, too, by the deal, and it has to be covered every day, which is really tough in the middle of the winter around here to continue to cover it so that we don't have our wild animals into it.
I know New Salem gets theirs hauled away.
And that was the plan for, and, you know, we can put that in there and just say that's what you would have to do.
Right. But I don't know, I don't know where, Shane, where is New Salem going with theirs? Do you know?
Uh, no, not off the top of my head. I think it was an outfit out of Minnesota.
Okay, then. But there, but then again, I believe they got a cooler, right, Shane? Six and one? They got a cooler to keep their inedible in. Some places don't have a cooler, they just set it outside in barrels. When I had a butcher shop in Hebron, that's what I did, I set it outside in barrels. He only came twice a week to get my inedible. Yeah, and people complained, too.
And I can't remember what Spencer said when we were out there with my BSC class, how often they come, but.
I don't know exactly either.
He had mentioned it to me, it's in my notes, in my office. I mean, I don't remember what he said, at least once a week. I can't remember if it was twice a week.
Yeah.
Because it was an outfit out of Minnesota, like.
Yeah.
Kind of Detroit Lakes, I think, or like closer.
Long Prairie.
Long Prairie, I'm sure, is where it goes, yeah.
Yeah, Long Prairie is the only rendering facility.
Any other question for Curtis? We'll continue, and we'll call you back up here again, perhaps.
Thank you, Kurt.
We're back to Natalie again.
Maybe I'll call Kurt, uh, yeah, after, I mean, you know, some other day, maybe talk more about it, and then we'll bring it back.
But I definitely would reduce that 100. That's way too big. I don't think their intention is to slaughter that many. I really don't.
No, he, he said 12.
Yeah, I don't see them being any bigger than New Salem.
For sure. I'm just trying to get us to a point where it's like, maybe we call.
Maybe we call minor up to 12, and then maybe our major is, you know, up to 80, and we have different standards for that, you know. So, yeah, we'll work on it some more.
Okay.
Yeah, we just got to find, got to find the people who have this knowledge, so now, now we know.
But I wasn't here, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting either, so.
Yep, so if, like I say, I can just, it was a good meeting. We had, we had the right person at the, at the meeting, so we can have a conversation, work on it some more, and bring it back.
There are some nuances here that need to be dealt with.
Yes.
Okay. But we're still, this is a public hearing, and we're, you're still up there for any questions for Natalie. Then as a public hearing, I'll open it now to, to those in attendance. I know Curtis already provided some input. Anybody else here to, to provide input on the meatpacking use standards? Second call for input on meatpacking use standards? Third call for any more expertise in this area, because some of us on here aren't that well schooled in this particular area, but appreciate the input there. Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and leave it up to the commission now to make recommendations, I know, to prove, I'd say we have to give Natalie some direction as well.
And, you know, also, if we, having heard that, it seems like there's a lot more to talk about. You know, if you don't have any particular direction, I can just have more conversations and bring something else back.
So we don't necessarily have to vote to approve what there is right now?
Yeah, no, this is just working on, working on ordinance. And, you know, that's kind of why we have, bring it to a meeting, you know, and anybody who happens to be here, you can, can comment. I think, so, yeah, working on standards for a full, you know, either you have it cooled and pick it up once a week, or, you know, a shorter number of days, just some process about what our expectations are for dealing with that, and then just fine-tune number of head better.
So we need a motion then to, to, to continue?
No, no, this isn't, it's just a public hearing. You don't need a motion. It's just working on an ordinance, so it doesn't require any action.
Okay, and then would you, when would you bring us back to us again?
You know, well, so what I wanted to do was give the board a heads-up that June meeting is going to be our first look at a direct air capture ordinance draft. The subcommittee's been working on that for months, and I think we have something finally that the industry representative and citizen representative and P&amp;Z commissioners and staff all, it seemed like it made sense. But, so I expect potentially a lot of discussion on that. It's going to be probably a long meeting, so depending on what other applications I get, I might not bring this back till July, or, you know, if June's going to be a big meeting.
I mean, this, this is nothing that's real pertinent right now.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I don't see it being a huge rush.
Okay. Any other direction from the commission to Natalie on this particular matter? Well, do we have anything else become by the commission tonight?
Nope, just make sure you're there in June for a fun meeting.
And bring some snacks and whatever you need.
Yes, eat, eat before the meeting, probably.
Might be here a little while.
I move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jackie moves to adjourn. Do we have a second? Eli, Helen makes a second to that. All favor sign by saying aye.
Aye.
You adjourned, and thank you, people, for coming tonight.